I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Mount Clemens Board of Education to order, please. Call or roll.
Mrs. Skahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Rick.
Here. The forum has been established. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you citizens can address the board within your questions, comments, and concerns. We ask that you come to the microphone and state your name and address. Be mindful, you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. Also, you may not receive a response to a particular inquiry here this evening. And last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
I live at 34 Scott Boulevard. I was privileged to attend the school and graduate in 1992. Along the way, I learned lessons from people of color like Mr. Parham, Ms. Alexander, that I used throughout my career and to this day. While many hold on to nostalgic memories of their school days and never return, I tried to give back when the opportunity presented itself. Fortunately, Mrs. Davis gave me that chance. I was proud to be a bather, as that pride turned into embarrassment in October. I will now say how this administration has treated Mrs. Bethel, that I am ashamed of this district. I am holding two job descriptions that are different from the ones that I was promoted to about a year after I started as a part-time edgistic staff employee. Some of these tasks were outsourced to someone working from home in Florida and to Willow Communications. The summer before David Lavender was hired, I was pressured to perform these human resource functions. I reluctantly performed these duties despite the urging of some in the central office at the time who knew that many of the duties I was trying to perform were against policy and procedures. I'll point to the job description of Executive Secretary to the superintendent as proof that these things were expected of me even after the hiring of David Lavender. This is a three-page laughable document that I'm hoping that the personnel committee did not get a chance to look at before it was posted. The task that stood out to me most was relating to personnel files. Policy 8320 states that the board delegates the maintenance of an employee personnel information system to the Director of Human Resources. I'm sure the intent of this policy is not for the Director of Human Resources to delegate again to someone with no central office certification and who doesn't even have to have a bachelor's degree. I also have a job description for the exact same job title for the Utica Community School District, which is a one-page document that reflects the school district that at least prepares a professional. I suggest looking at other job descriptions in the central office to see if they even exist and if they too conflict with policy. Dozens of policies state that the superintendent shall prepare administrative guidelines for this policy. I will state that the latest administrative guideline that the superintendent updated last month was her first. Had the superintendent, under three years, had done this with the urging of Mr. Monk, many embarrassing issues could have been avoided. Our district deserves so much better than the reputation that the superintendent has allowed it to earn through her negligence. After my resignation was accepted, I was given a link for my exit interview. Though I don't know if you got to see these interviews or if you're waiting for Uncalhoun County ISD to digest them for you, I will share one thing I wrote. This administration is embarrassing at best and dangerous at worst. I ask that you please reconsider offering three-year contracts to non-union members and allow the incoming superintendent to evaluate these individuals in the coming school year. And three-year contracts be offered to those deserving in April's regular board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Second call, citizens' comments.
My name is Jennifer Shepherd. I live at Scott Boulevard, 34 Scott Boulevard. I wanted to share my perspective on the beginning of the 22-23 school year, before my job was dissolved after speaking up for the students, staff, and parents regarding Chromebooks as the high school secretary. Aside from the lack of Chromebooks for the students, which I addressed in October at the expense of my position that I have held for three and a half years, there were many troubling incidents in my short time with this current administration, and I could not get through them in three minutes. Although your guests from the last workshop praised the leadership of this school's administrator, this school's administrators, it is my contention that the students, parents, and teachers deserve no less than 100% of credit for enduring this school year, and successes were made despite the Mount Clemens Community School District's current administration and not because of them. Almost all of the Sensational Six were able to take advantage of the programs offered through dual enrollment, which is nothing unique to this school year. Many of our children began this year herded into this room, as well as the gym, for multiple weeks while the principal, Tina McNeely, refused to use the schedules that were already prepared the previous year by previous principal Kirk Duncan and counselor Tamara Hickson and left in his office to use. Despite parents and students coming to the office and telling the current principal, Tina McNeely, that they already had taken the classes she assigned, she refused to change their schedules and told them they were going to stay with what they were given, taken or not. Previous years, students were placed in online classes if need be, also under teacher direction to make sure they were given all opportunities that in-building classes may not have offered or have already been taken in past. Teachers and secretaries quit because of the lack of structure and the effect it had on students. The culture has not improved with F-bombs and the N-word being used in the halls regularly by teachers and staff and inappropriate music being played in the classrooms by teachers. It is time for Tina McNeely, David Lavender, Tom Hannah, and Monique Bills to take accountability for their actions and stop blaming past admin and staff. Security consisted of mothers of problem children hired after the school year had already begun and who quickly tried to intimidate teachers and support staff. These incidents were documented and reported, and the only action taken was to retaliate against those making the reports. As a parent of a student who should go to this district, if not for the current administration's gross incompetence, I hope that you take these and other testimonies into consideration and not change non-union contracts to a length of three years. Please let the incoming superintendent evaluate individuals himself and make recommendations for the upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Joyce Crum. My address is 10422 Hart Avenue, and I am the head of Youth Services at the Mount Clemens Public Library. I am here tonight to share with you the extraordinary changes that I witnessed at Seminole Academy under the leadership of Principal Dya Bethel. In my capacity as the children's librarian at the Mount Clemens Public Library, I have had the opportunity to work directly with students and staff at Seminole over the past three years. Under Principal Bethel's leadership, I watched the school transform into the educational institution that our children deserve. She is firm yet kind and sets high expectations for all members of the Seminole learning community. Principal Bethel ensues, ensures those expectations are clearly communicated and sets the roadmap for how her students and staff can meet those expectations, then recognizes and supports their achievements. I have seen transformative change in three key areas: student discipline, community building, and literacy. In my weekly visits to Seminole, I have witnessed a growing calmness among students, and though it has meant learning new procedures and readjusting their own expectations, students have thrived in the order Principal Bethel is creating. Her methods are respectful and age-appropriate and are linked directly to community building. Students are encouraged to work cooperatively to attain goals and meet expectations and to be respectful to each other, as well as anyone who visits the building. Finally, Principal Bethel understands the transformative effect that literacy education can have in a community. She shares my belief that it is indeed the crux of community change. And while it is easy to tout the values of literacy, Principal Bethel backs up her commitment with action and follow-through. Principal Bethel and I worked closely together this year and worked well together, and we had some extraordinary plans in the works for the 22, I'm sorry, the 23-24 school year. I am still hopeful that we can work together again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Excuse me, Roxanne Brown, 590 Clinton River Drive, Mount Clemens, Michigan. I have heard that there have been some public declarations by this board about the improvement in test scores at Seminole Academy, where I have been a substitute since 2019. And in these declarations of success in terms of improving test scores, there has been no mention of the principal that made this possible, and that is Principal Dya Bethel. And I know firsthand that she strategically hired teachers with proven track records at raising scores. And I talked to these teachers when they came in this year, and some of them wore this like a badge of honor that I have brought test scores up by two grade levels. I have brought test scores up among fourth graders. And I think that no matter what your thoughts are and your personal vendettas, that that's pretty small not to give credit where credit is due. The other thing that I would like to mention is that I'm looking for financial disclosure that I don't find. I am seeking financial disclosure from this Board of Education as to what has been allocated for legal fees this fiscal year and what the expenditure is for legal fees, because I know firsthand that there have been exorbitant hirings of attorneys this year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is, sorry, Kiara Johnson at 20011 Wayland, Roseville. I wanted to come up and just briefly touch on my experience at Seminole for the past two years. The last time that I came here, I didn't really touch on a lot of things, but after Mrs. Bethel was walked out, I just could not not speak up again. I was there last year when the school was just chaotic. It was absolutely no control in the school. I was in there when Mr. Lucas was there. He had somewhat of some male presence that was there, but when he was removed, that was gone. It was no more male presence in the school. It was just women for the most part. Those kids ran over us. It was just completely no control, no structure. Mrs. Bethel was bringing that to that school. And I don't see how in the world you guys could come and teach these kids and say that you're here for these kids when you can walk past numerous teachers like myself that look like myself and don't speak. Always have to speak to them first. It's ridiculous. We are all supposed to be here for children. And if you can't even speak to me, how can you teach our children? When I came there, the kids were so excited to see a black teacher. I even spoke about the racism that I was experiencing last year and did not want to return to Seminole because of that reason. It was ridiculous. And coming here this year, I felt the difference. I saw a difference. There were more teachers that looked like myself, and I felt like that's what those kids needed. They needed a mixture of black and white teachers that get along. It is so ridiculous that the personal is conflicting with what is the purpose of being here in the first place. The way that she was walked out was so disgusting and distasteful. I couldn't believe it. It was a half-day, couldn't wait till the day was over, couldn't wait till the end of the school year. It's like you guys are making an example out of our black people, and to see the black people on the board and that it keeps happening is also disgusting and ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Diane Jackson, 615 Wellington Crescent, Mount Clemens, Michigan. I'm just kind of waiting till that makes its way around. Thank you. I have given each board member the letter that was sent to Ms. Bethel by Earl Rickman. I will read portions of the letter. Dear Ms. Bethel, the Mount Clemens Community Schools, in parentheses, the District, Board of Education, in parentheses, the Board, is in receipt of your letter dated May 8, 2023. In your letter, you requested that the Board hold a hearing pursuant to Board Bylaw 0133 to resolve a dispute regarding your 2022-23 administrative evaluation. Board Bylaw 0133 grants the Board discretion to hold hearings in order to resolve disputes arising in the District. Upon review of your request, the Board has decided not to hold the requested hearing. While Bylaw, while Board Bylaw 0133 grants the Board the discretion to hold hearings to resolve disputes, Board Bylaw 0133 does not require the Board to do so. Pursuant to Board Policy 1420, the Board has delegated authority to the superintendent regarding the establishment and implementation of the administrative evaluation process. Therefore, disputes regarding the evaluation process are within the jurisdiction of the superintendent and will be resolved by the superintendent. Now, I want to direct your attention to the exact date, which is May 26, which was the day Ms. Bethel was placed on her administrative leave. I'm seeking confirmation that this action was from the entire Board, that all of you agreed to that, since the only CC on there was two Monique Bills. Or did Earl Rickman make the decision of one for this entire Board? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
A follow-up to that is this. 0143 Authority: Individual members of the Board of Education do not possess the powers that reside in the Board. The Board speaks through its minutes and not through its individual members. An act of the Board should not be valid unless approved at an official meeting by at least a majority vote of the members elected to and serving on the Board. MCL 3801201. Now, I know my three minutes is running, but let me move to another concern that I have. Earl, this Board, under your leadership, has lost its credibility in the community by virtue of the fact that the Board engaged in a cover-up involving the outgoing superintendent. The Macom Dalek printed an article absolving the superintendent of any responsibility involving the twerking incident at the high school. However, this was not true. The superintendent was placed on administrative leave for violating the Whistleblower Act Regarding Ms. Shepherd. That was in the paper, so it's not about we can't talk about personnel issues here. This is disgusting, it's deplorable, it's defiling, it's deplorable. Board, we're going to do something about this Board sitting here, looking at us again, and not doing your jobs by virtue of the fact that you do not want to hear from us, and the only time we can talk is like this. You have in your, in your bylaws, you, you can call, you can have a meeting with individuals or a group. You're going to hear from us one way or another. Dr. Martin Luther King said this. He said, "The moral arc of the universe is extremely long, but it bends towards justice," and that's what we're after.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Lovely Polk, and my address is 13371 North Side Drive. I just wanted to say that Principal Bethel has worked very, very hard. She has went above and beyond to fight for the staff and the students. I'm not understanding why she was placed on administrative leave and the way that she was placed on administrative leave. I know that her face and everything was removed from the website, so I'm pretty sure that more than likely y'all plan on removing her. I watched her be harassed. I watched her, I watched y'all try to break her down, but I just want y'all to know that it will never work. She's more than qualified to be the principal at Seminole Academy, and I just hope and pray that y'all make it right. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Last call, citizens' comments.
My name is Edry Mann. I'm at 346 Huntington, Mount Clemens, 48043. I'm a parent, again, completely blown away and disgusted at what I'm hearing from my beloved teachers and my beloved principal. This is a public district where the taxpayers fund the school and the Board is elected, okay? We have a right to know what happened to Ms. Bethel. Why was she marched out in front of our students? Why did my children come home bawling their eyes out? That they watched their principal, who they love and that all those kids love, get marched out of the school an hour before a half-day was over? Couldn't have waited a half-hour? An hour? Had to do that in front of her students. I want to know why Mr. Fullwood's contract was terminated. I want to know why Mrs. Bethel was placed on administrative leave, and none of us know why. I want to know why 2022, 2023 was the first year teachers of color were being hired in Mount Clemens District. I want to know why there's a rumor of a new plot already in place to take down the new superintendent. Another black man coming from a really good job who has a wife and children to support as well, that he'll be out by next year. I want to know who made the decision to close MLK, sell the building, take all those students, and put some 600, almost 600 students into one building at Seminole Academy. I want to know where the surplus funds are from the District. I want to know how it's being used, because it doesn't look like it's going back for the education or the betterment of our kids. I'm just going to say this, because it's feeling real plantation-y in here, and it makes me sick. These are our children. This is not politics. This is not, you know, Bret Meyer Hill's running Joy Road. These are good teachers and good people, and this is disgusting in our district and unacceptable as a parent of two children who love these teachers and Ms. Bethel. So we want answers at some point, not just blank faces. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Ebony Douglas Armstrong. My address is 7388 West Outer Drive, Detroit, Michigan, and I want to speak on behalf of Principal Bethel, but in concern of education. Coming from Detroit Public School, I saw that a huge education gap in the students that were before me, and as far as I was told, that the kids have had a surplus of teachers entering the school. I have made the decision to stay, not because money, but because of the relationships that I have built with the kids in Seminole School. They are deserving of someone who cares, who loves them, that's willing to nurture them, willing to stand for them, and willing to close those education gaps. They need stability, which they have not received in the last couple of years. I've seen and heard from parents, just the other day, I had a parent, a conversation with a parent who will be enrolling their kid in Chippewa because they were upset with the instability of the school and what they see happening with the kids that's in the classroom. Parents want the best for their kids, and it's a very small district, and we need all the kids that we can get. Coming from DPS, I've seen closures. I know what closure is about, and we don't want to see those closures. We don't want to see a thriving district closed because we don't have the kids before us. The bottom line is, we make our money because these kids are present for us, and they need us. And they need teachers who are qualified, who are willing to give all of themselves. And I'm not saying that that was not happening. I wasn't there, but I know what the kids need. The test scores will not improve if they don't have stability. If there are a surge of teachers coming in every out, you cannot build that foundation that the kids need. So that's one of my concerns. When I thought about leaving, you know, the attachment that I had to these kids and what I saw what was going on with them and why they wasn't so low, it's not because the kids don't have the ability, they just don't have the consistency and the stability that they need. They can't be grounded because they don't have anybody that's stagnant. They need somebody that's going to be there day-to-day, somebody they could depend on. Every time I told them I was leaving, they thought that it was going to be a leave where I was going to be gone for a long period of time. I'm like, no, I had to reassure them, like, no, it's just a temporary leave. I'm going away for the weekend or whatever had been, I'm not going to leave you. So this is something that we need to think about retaining our teachers, retaining qualified teachers, and doing what we need to enhance the curriculum and keep our students here in this community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Andre Fullwood, 37140, Bryanford Drive, Clinton Township, Michigan. My heart is raging on the inside because, do you not know that people laughed, jumped up and down when they saw what happened to Ms. Bethel? Do you not know that I heard that people were so excited that I got terminated? Failing to realize the effect that I have with the kids, failing to realize the effect that Mrs. Bethel have on the kids and the other staff. The Bible says, I'm going to reread this again, "An unjust man," that's a person that's ungodly, "is an abomination to the righteous, those who are godly. And those who are upright in the way of the Lord is an abomination to the wicked." And that's our war. It's the godly with the ungodly, against the ungodly. All we here to do is serve. We know teachers and staff don't make a lot of money. You have to have a love for this, like you have to have a love to be a social worker. But for some reason, we can't get along. For some reason, we have personal vendettas and don't even know each other. We've picked up seeds of discord because, well, this person doesn't like you. There is other teachers who said, Andre, I'm being mistreated too, and they are Caucasian. Why? Because they talked to Ms. Bethel? Because they spent time in our office? So there's been other teachers who have marked, what whose side are you on? This was the atmosphere in Seminole. But to those of us who stay neutral, you're just as guilty. Two quotes by Dr. Martin Luther King. "The ultimate tragedy is not the oppression and the cruelty by the bad people, but the silence over that by the good people." Then he also stated, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." And then finally by Robert F. Kennedy. Each time a man stands up for an idea "Each time a man stands up for an idea or acts to improve the lots of others or strikes out against injustice, he sends forth a tiny ripple of hope." I believe those of us who are here who have sacrificed time have all gathered together to make a tiny ripple of hope. Hope that this injustice, hope that this racism, this systemic racism will end. And in that I understand clearly that there be martyrs because people have been martyred for the sake of justice. So just think about it. Check your heart. Check your motive because one day we all stand before God.
Thank you for your comments.
Again, Mrs. Bethel is a phenomenal leader who cares about education at its finest. I have worked with Bea Bethel for many years when she was at the Detroit Public School System. And she's my mentor. And to hear of such a thing... To hear of such a thing that has happened to her has really broken my heart. I ask this community, I ask this board to reevaluate and make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you give us your name, please, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Taffitha Roundtree. I live at 16300 North Park Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48237, apartment 910. I wasn't going to speak without getting everyone else to speak because I think I done spoke a lot. I'm very disappointed with the culture at Seminole Academy. It has come a long ways. We have improved a great deal, but it can be better. I came to Seminole to assist because, to bring diversity. I left a six-figure job to come to Seminole to help. I left teaching seven years ago. I came to Seminole to assist Principal Bethel because she's a great leader. I've worked with her in the field of education for over 20 years. We went to college together. That was my college partner when we received our masters. I do believe the treatment that she received is truly, truly unfair. She deserves a second chance to show the district what she can do without being micromanaged. The test scores have one up. She brought a phenomenal team in with her when she arrived. I'm just frustrated. We need to see more minorities in the building. We need father figures in the building. We have to remember, these kids that we are serving are low income. It's a single-family household. Some of them don't have a mom or a dad. They look up to that. Mr. Fullwood, my students asked to go to him, not because they were misbehaving, just to have a conversation with him because they're missing that father figure in the household. I spoke to several of my students, and I would say, well, let me, I'm going to call your mom. Oh, I don't live with my mom. I stay with my grandma. I live with my auntie. Oh, I stay with my older sister. So we got to be mindful of where these kids are coming from. And I think that's what we're missing. We're missing the bigger picture here is the service, the soup, what's best for them. Some of these kids are homeless. They don't have food. They don't have lights. They don't have water. They don't have gas. But we're arguing and nitpicking with one another for what? It doesn't make sense. Our job is to serve the community, and the community is these kids because they are our future. If we don't do a justice for them, how can our future sustain? It's not. It's going to fail. And it's not, and yes, the racism is alive and kicking in Seminole. But anybody can educate a kid if they put their heart into it. And I know 95% of the teachers at Seminole care about those kids. I see the way they interact with those kids. That's white teachers and black teachers. It's only a few that's trying to do a disservice to the school. And if those few feel that they don't want to be a part of, they should just leave. Because I thought about it, I thought about learning hard. I'm coming back to Seminole. I promised my kids that I'll be back. They're asking, Ms. Roundtree, I'm going to be in your classroom next year. Ms. Roundtree, I asked my teacher to put me in your classroom. That was so heartwarming to me. So I'm coming back just for that because I promised them that I'm going to be their teacher next year. So I think you all need to reevaluate this, bring Ms. Bethel back and Mr. Fullwood back so these kids can see a representation of themselves in the community because a lot of them do not have their parents at home that resembles that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Jones. I live at 25401 St. James, Southfield, Michigan. I'm also a new teacher in the building as of the 2022-23 school year. And I just wanted to speak to the support that is in favor of Ms. Bethel. A petition that is still up and running on change.org has well over 350 signatures in support of reinstating Principal Bethel. There are also dozens of comments. If anyone wants to take a look, you can go right to change.org and see the comments and the support that the community is showing for Principal Bethel. I also want to speak to the fact that I will be returning to Seminole next year. I am not being moved. It's important for our children to see the consistency of the representation. Myself and Ms. Roundtree, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Armstrong, and the other African-American teachers that were hired this year, Ms. Fowler. It is extra important that Mr. Fullwood, whose presence brings about such a change in the disposition of the students in the building, as well as Principal Bethel, she's worked well with her team, which is somewhat of an administrative team, Ms. Dickinson and Mr. Fullwood. She could definitely use the support of an assistant principal. But the three of them together, along with the support of the teachers and other staff members, made such a huge impact with the students this year. And it is shown and expressed to us daily by the parents at how well things are run, from the morning pickup to the afternoon drop-off and everything in between. And I just feel that the board should take a step back and reevaluate, take a look at what has happened, hear the voices of the community, of the leaders, of the parents, of the families and other stakeholders, and make sure that the right thing is done for the students of Mount Clemens. And that is to reinstate Principal Bethel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That was the last call for citizens' comments. Moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda this evening. Excuse me, item five, consent agenda under item five, the consent agenda. Five, eight, approval of minutes of one, May 17, 2023, regular meeting. Two, May 17, 2023, special meeting. Three, June 15, 2023, workshop session. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor about the consent agenda? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six, human resources. Eight, approval. There are some changes for item six. We're going to remove item B, six, six B. And we're going to add to C, new hires, B two. What was that?
First grade teacher.
First grade teacher.
Yes.
So agenda item C is A, approval of the MCCS and MCEA collective bargaining agreement for 2023 to 2026. Then the B will be new hires, one and two. We're adding two, the first grade teacher. Agenda item six, A, approval of the MCCS and MCEA collective bargaining agreement, 23, 2023 to 2026. Madam Superintendent.
It's the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the collective bargaining agreement from, for July 1 of 2023 through June 30 of 2026.
We heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Sound like Member Collins. Are any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Has the, and I'm guessing since you brought it forward, there has been a TA with the union regarding this contract?
Yes, there has.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor to approval of the MCCS and MCEA collective bargaining agreement for the years 2023 to 2026? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
And Mr. Walker and Ms. Collins.
Motion carries. Item six, B, new hires. One, speech and language pathologist. Two, first grade teacher. Madam Superintendent.
We are requesting that the board recommend the hiring of a speech and language pathologist. This is actually a point six position and a full-time first grade teacher.
The recommendation is to approve the hiring of a speech and language pathologist and a first grade teacher.
This is an in-person, by the way, the speech and language pathologist. That's, remember the issues that we've had with that being online.
And the recommendation is to approve the speech and language pathologist and the hiring of a first grade teacher.
So moved.
Moved by Member Collins. I give the support to Mr. Walker. How about that? Moved by Member Collins. Seconded by Member Walker. Are there any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? The speech pathologist, is that a single building responsibility or will that be district-wide?
Mr. Lavigne, can you answer that?
Primarily preschool, lower L.
Preschool and lower L.
Yep.
So we getting two new hires for Seminole?
Yes, two new hires for Seminole.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Kahoon? Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, curriculum. Eight, 98B, state academic slash goal achievements. Madam Superintendent.
This is the completion of our year goals that we presented to the board. We originally presented, I believe, in maybe September, October, and we again presented in February. And this is our final recap of our goals. This is a compliance issue every district in the state. It needs to do this before the end of June. So here we go.
So like Ms. Beals stated, this presentation is in compliance, is outlined in Law Public Act 144 of 2022. This presentation will also be posted on the website by tomorrow. The first goal that we will focus on will help us to understand by the end of 2223 school year, each school and district will show growth in reading or ELA achievement. And this is primarily measured by NWEA. That goal also has the expectation that all teachers will use a variety of strategies and assessments to support meaningful student progress towards mastery of reading or ELA academic standards. The graph on the left is a reflection of the growth from the fall assessment to the projected growth, which are the orange diamonds at the winter assessment. On the right, you will see from fall to spring. The far left is kindergarten and then first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. What we saw this year is that all grades at Seminole increased their progress. Second grade exceeded the growth expectation. And fourth grade met the projected growth target in language arts. This is for Mount Clemens Middle School, sixth, seventh, eighth, left, middle, and right. Again, the left graph is from fall to winter and the right graph is fall to spring. We saw progress in sixth grade. We saw some regression in seventh and eighth. At the high school level, from fall to winter is on the left. From fall to spring is on the right. We saw 10th and 11th grade far exceed the growth projection in language arts. And 12th grade exceeded the growth projection by a little bit. So an analysis, what we saw from fall to spring is second grade exceeded the growth expectation. Fourth grade met that expected growth target. 10th and 11th graders exceeded, ninth grade was at the bottom end. Second, 10th, and 11th graders demonstrated growth that demonstrates narrowing gaps in achievement as their projected growth target was exceeded by their actual growth.
I have a question, Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Go back to the last slide, please.
The slide?
That one. Where the second grade exceeded and the fourth grade met the expectation. What are we doing for one, three, and five that did not meet the expectation? What are our strategies moving forward for that group? Because they will be moving up to another grade.
Correct. All of the grades demonstrated progress. They just didn't exceed their growth projection. As we plan for next year's professional development, we are continuing with our Kagan structures, which provide staff with techniques and strategies that increase student engagement. That approach to instruction is very effective when it comes to student achievement. So we're expecting some good results as more staff get trained through those structures. We're also focusing on our MTSS process, making sure that it is properly implemented and followed. We have very strong protocols for our MTSS process, multi-tiered systems of support. And we have to make sure that all grade levels are active in that process.
And how is the goal established?
The goal...
You had the orange triangles and how is that goal established?
NWEA actually does that for us. They look at the fall testing scores and it's part of their algorithms to come up with that grade level's expected growth, both for the winter testing and then again for the spring.
Right.
Go back another slide, Mr. Lavigne. You said that, no, go back to the, yeah, the babies. Another slide back. You said that first and second?
Sorry.
That one.
Yes.
So you said they almost, they met it?
Second, second exceeded and fourth met.
So when you look at fourth grade for a winter to fall right here, you can see that they were exceeding at this point and they stayed the course, but they just met it because as the year goes on, those, that expected growth raises. and, and they stayed the course, but they just met it because as the year goes on, those, that gro- expected growth raises, rises.
So what are we doing about third grade?
Again, we're, we have our school improvement process, which has a well-defined plan to provide specific training to instructional techniques. Uh, we also are ensuring, we're, we have planned out work with our MTSS process this summer to ensure that, um, our plans to implement that process are, are strong and that those procedures will be followed next year. The, the protocols are there and we will continue to tap into, uh, those grades that are demonstrating that work, uh, so that they can share what's working for them, and we will also, uh, tie that to the training that we're providing and the improvement techniques and, and protocols that we have in place. Uh, we will make sure that that's part of our early training in August, uh, and then that will be reinforced throughout our PLCs throughout the year and other meetings.
All right, I was just gonna mention, so the PLCs are a big part of that as well as walkthroughs with the administration. Our DTN team, um, will be, hopefully, um, next year will be conducting more walkthroughs in classrooms so that the, what, um, different administrators see in a classroom, that they're all on the same page, and that helps as well too, having those conversations.
Okay. My next question is on the third and fifth grade up here, how many classes do we have?
Two.
Two.
Two? Uh, all those instructors returning?
Um, I believe yes. That's our hope, and that's another thing that is so positive about this contract is we have a three-year contract with our teachers and I believe that that will help us keep our staff.
And they're getting additional support for those two classes? Okay.
Can you go to the next slide, yeah? What does this mean at the sixth grade because it shows nothing on the RIT score at the, you know, on the bottom, so what does that mean?
Their, their growth was very small, fall to winter. Uh, the, the data table above shows that in the fall, they had a one, one ninety-two point six, and at the winter test, it was a one ninety-three. My sharing just, I have to reshare. Sorry about that. I, I timed out. So, what I was saying was the, um, the growth from fall to winter was very small, so therefore the blue bar wasn't there because the growth wasn't, you know.
I have a question if we can go back to third grade because third grade has been a concern for years with low test scores. Can, and it doesn't have to be right now, but in the next curriculum meeting or in the next workshop, can you explain the changes that have taken place from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, and how we're gonna implement additional changes in third grade to improve going forward?
Hold on, it's coming up. All right, can you click on my name, Mr. Rickman? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I will follow up with C and P and then, uh, bring that to a workshop, okay? Am I okay to move on to math? All right, so for math, we had the same expectations regarding the growth, um, and we measured that through NWEA. Uh, from fall to winter is on the left and from win- or from fall to spring is on the right. As you can see, uh, second grade far exceeded the growth projection. Uh, all grades, kindergarten through fifth, did show progress, uh, but it was second grade who far exceeded the growth expectation from fall to spring. At the middle school, uh, all three grades showed growth and in the fall to spring, uh, graph that's on the right, we see a lot of growth in seventh and even eighth grade did exceed the growth projection. At the high school level, uh, all four grades exceeded the growth projection with tenth and twelfth far exceeding that growth, growth projection. So, as I just summarized, again, second grade exceeded the growth expectations. All grades seventh through twelfth exceeded that growth expectation and, uh, second and seventh through twelfth all helped to narrow the achievement gaps. Here's a summary of the math growth versus the growth projection, K twelve. So this, this is just a compilation of the three math graphs from the three schools all put into one.
All right, Mr. Lavine, I see, I see an issue I wanna bring up real quick.
Okay.
Kindergarten, first grade, fifth grade and sixth grade, and eighth grade and ninth grade, all transitional grades are having minimum growth. What's our solution for those?
Well, it's part of our school improvement plan is to increase achievement in the areas of math and language arts. Uh, we have designed an entire new school improvement plan aligned with our partnership agreement. Um, and transitions are actually part of the work that we're going to do. Kids struggle when they transition to a school, whether it's in kindergarten or whether it's to middle school or to high school. Um, so we are in the process of planning more effective transition activities and to get kids acclimated both from an academic or behavioral standpoint.
I think in addition, just to speak for ninth grade math is, um, my tenth and eleventh grade math actually is, we, um, at some points have three teachers in that classroom. So we have, um, a general ed teacher, we have a special education teacher that's working with students, and we also have a support person within math that is supporting the students at the high school level. And the he is, they are there, I wanna say the first three hours, correct, okay.
Yes.
So they are working with the students the first three hours and that has been really, really phenomenal, as you can see.
That was an intervention that worked well for us this year, so. Here's a summary of the kindergarten through twelfth grade ELA. Uh, this is just a compilation of the three ELA graphs showing the same exact data. It's just a snapshot of our entire district. Part of the compliance piece is to, uh, post the same data that was in those graphs, um, for the school district by grade level. So, this is just a data table showing those graphs in data table form. Another part of that compliance piece is to show the exact same data by grade and by school. Uh, so this is just another data table satisfying that compliance piece representing the same data that was just shared and discussed. Another, another expectation through ninety-eight B is to post the demographic data to demonstrate how each demographic group performs on NWEA in math and reading in each grade level. So the next few slides shows that data. This will be on the website if you would like to dig deeper into that. So, you asked about how we're going to address the issues in areas, not only in the grade levels who didn't demonstrate as much growth as others. Uh, we are ensuring that each student has access to grade level instruction. Uh, through, throughout our work this past year through school and district improvement and our plans moving forward is to audit our curriculum, to ensure that our standards and benchmarks that are designed for each grade level are being taught and assessed and used, uh, with the students so that they can progress. Uh, we provided training this past year, um, to mentors and mentees through the balanced assessment training. Uh, we have plans for performance matters training and we had a secondary team just go through training uh, in regards to assessment and we'll have a Seminole team join us in August to continue that work. And that work includes auditing current assessments, both standardized or local, and ensuring that our benchmarks, uh, that are assigned to each grade level and each course are aligned to the work that's happening in the classroom. We have training planned for the entire staff for wonders and bridges, our ELA and math curriculums at Seminole. So all staff will be trained in August of twenty-three to ensure that we are implementing those programs with fidelity. Later this summer, we'll go through the science curriculum adoption, kindergarten through fifth grade. So when we think about student progress, updating our science curriculum will help to increase critical thinking and problem solving, and you can actually support, uh, reading or learning to read through, through science as well. Um, our professional learning communities will continue, uh, through next year. Our instructional coaches and MTSS coach and process are actually at training today and tomorrow and have more training this summer, and we have plans to review, uh, our current MTSS process and make sure that it is implemented next year as planned. And as Ms. Beals noted earlier, the idea of walkthroughs, uh, Mr. Roper and I have already had conversations about, um, making sure that there are regular and often walkthroughs in classrooms throughout the district, and the administrative team, uh, will do that collaboratively and we will have a structured process to reflect on what we have observed or saw and how we can support teachers to make sure that what should be happening in classrooms is, is happening. Uh, over time, our staff has gone through responsive classroom or restorative justice training, restorative practices. We've had three different types of assessment training either happen or that are in process right now. The Kagan Cooperative Learning, uh, was very impactful on our staff, uh, back in March, and we have more days of our Kagan training planned for this upcoming school year. Our professional learning communities, uh, will, as, and as part of our partnership agreement, will have a stronger data-driven instructional decision-making process. That is actually one of our goals in our school improvement plan and it's defined in our partnership agreement with Michigan Department of Education. Coaching cycles, uh, will continue into next year where our instructional coaches will continue to work with staff. Letters training, uh, is provided to lower elementary staff. Um, even our, our new first grade teacher, um, will be going to letters training, um, and the macomb literacy module training, uh, later this summer. And then Orton Gillingham is, is specific for specific teachers. Our improvement plan and our partnership agreement hold us accountable to make sure that this, the progress that you observed today continues to increase. Um, the work that we started to do during our Michigan Assessment Consortium training and that will continue throughout the summer, uh, will help us to unpack standards and benchmarks so that we can ensure that our, our curriculum maps are well-defined and used, that we have established common vocabulary in each grade level and each course, that pacing guides are well-defined and followed. Um, this work has already started, it's continuing already this summer and we will continue to complete that work. We have after-school programs focusing on academic growth. Uh, we have our summer programs running July tenth through August seventeenth. Uh, and our staff are going through many training opportunities. Some of them include the Michigan Assessment Consortium, Kagan, and E-WIMS, which is Early Warning Monitoring Systems. That E-WIMS training is part of our partnership agreement and our school improvement plan, uh, and that training will provide us, uh, the guidance to develop a system to, um, monitor students' progress academically and behaviorally so that we can catch students who are struggling early and we will have systems to address those concerns. Good teachers make a difference. We know that research tells us that the highest impact on a student's progress is a quality teacher. So, we will continue to, um, support them and to help them to strengthen their practices so our students can achieve more. So please forward any questions to me.
I got a couple of questions, Ms. Lavine.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, from K one, five, six, and seven, eight. We start, we end in week and we start off week. He said in March, we had a Kagan training?
Yes.
So, with this assessment, you should be able to tell us what we did wrong or what didn't work. You gave us solutions of what we're gonna do to how to fix the results. So, what went wrong?
Can you give me a specific grade and we can look at?
Let's go from five to six. Five was start, was ending week, we was strong at third grade, then it went down. Fifth grade was weak, sixth grade started weak, seventh grade went up. Eighth grade started weak, ninth grade started weak, they didn't start it going up. So with the assessments, cause you talked about after-school programs, are they effective?
We're conducting program evaluations this summer, so we'll be able to determine their effectiveness or not uh, once those program evaluations are completed.
In, in the past year or so, did we get any evaluations on the effectiveness of the after-school?
I have no data from past years on the effectiveness of those programs. That's, that's why we're implementing the program evaluation for, uh, after-school programs and then we'll also do that after the summer program as well.
We have a math, uh, math coach right now, correct? Do we have a math coach?
Um, at, uh, Seminole, we have a math interventionist.
Interventionist?
We have a instructional coach here for all classes. We also had a math interventionist who worked primarily with the high school kids this year.
Any, any evaluation or data to show its effectiveness?
The, uh, math interventionist?
Yes.
Uh, at the high school was a major player in the projected growth, um, scores that our students showed in math at the secondary level, so.
You say that, that, male or female, I don't know, um, you said there was a major player in the effective?
So as Ms. Beals referenced, there was, in some of those high school courses, we had the math teacher. In the first three hours of the day, we had our math interventionist and, um, there was some overlap. Um, we also had a specialized teacher who co-taught in those math classes. Uh, so there was a lot of individualized instruction during the learning process, uh, and then those students would be, uh, polled either during advisory or during lunch and provided extra support during the timeframe of learning, and the students responded very well to that intervention at the high school.
Okay, I'm gonna go right back to that question, I'm glad you brought that up. The math interventionists, they go with just ninth grade to twelfth grade or do they do seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleven, twelve?
For this year, the math interventionist, uh, was for the high school.
Only the high school? So nobody at the eighth grade level?
Correct.
We had other interventions at the middle school, which would be our instructional coach. We had a reading intervention, um, we had a para-pro who would help with students, but not a math interventionist.
So with these results here, the assessment, would you say there was effective?
I would say that the math interventionists at the high school yielded tremendous results. Uh, we have to do the program evaluations on the other interventions to see their effectiveness. NWEA is one assessment. Um, I would like to, once we get the M-step scores back, look to see how, um, the students who were involved in either after-school tutoring or who worked with the interventionists, both at Seminole and at secondary, how their M-step scores may have improved. We also have SAT data, PSAT eight, nine, ten, eleven, that we haven't gotten that data back. So once we get that data, part of that program evaluation will be to look at the data from those specific kids who are in those specific interventions to see what type of response they had to that attention.
Okay, so we're looking at data, the different tests the kids take. I'm looking at information on evaluating individuals that are given the instruction, okay? Because we just voted on a few things tonight and know, I know what's gonna be coming up soon because we gotta support a lot of this stuff to sustain it in the future. So I wanna know who's effective in, in teaching these students. We got a math interventionist, we got all these different individuals playing different pieces, but if the effectiveness is not being shown on the assessment, then we need to evaluate the individual that's presenting the, the material.
Correct.
Kinda makes a little bit of sense. To me it does.
It makes a ton of sense.
I don't have a, a master's degree in education, but it kinda makes a little bit of sense.
Everything you're saying makes a ton of sense.
Okay, so that's why I was asking was, in those grade levels, which are transitional grades, they end week and they start week. On the assessment, we, we seen it, it was a low, straight across, then it spiked. I mean, first grade, second grade, great. I mean, first grade, second grade, great. But at kindergarten, first, they staying the same. So I'm asking like, who's, who's in those positions? I'm not saying anybody's doing a bad job or a good job, but we need to evaluate how they getting the material. I'm pretty sure it's, it's coming up next. So, all right, let's get back with that one.
I was just answering, answering questions, so.
Oh, that's fine. Oh, well, I do have another question then.
Go ahead.
You said a summer program coming up, right? You mentioned that in your slide. Go back one more slide. The enrichment activities in the summer program.
Yes.
Enlighten me on that one.
For secondary, we have PE, weight training, dance, HVAC. For elementary, we have hired two people to run our, in district people to run elementary enrichment. And we're in the process of hiring three paraprofessionals to assist them. I just received confirmation today from the Detroit Chapter of the YMCA. And they gave us dates that they're going to come out and work with students throughout the enrichment as well. The Mount Clemens Public Library has proposed how they're going to support the elementary enrichment as well. So we're not only running our own in-district activities, which will include sports, art, and so on, but we're also tapping into other partners like the YMCA and the Mount Clemens Public Library to provide more enrichment for our elementary kids.
Okay. The enrichment program is very important. I do, I do believe so. What?
I agree.
What are we gonna have in the summer program to stimulate the learning process?
So the, the structure of the summer programs, the academic time runs from eight till noon. There's a lunch from twelve to twelve-thirty and then enrichment is from twelve-thirty to two-thirty. So the academic times, all of our elementary academic programs were designed through the MISD. And all of the teachers who have been hired to teach those programs have gone through training through the MISD. And they also get resources and materials from the MISD to make sure that those programs are implemented with fidelity.
Go ahead.
You mentioned, and I wrote that question down before Dave, about enrichment, I didn't hear anything about academic classes. But you just stated that there are some academic. And you said that the academic classes were being designed by the ISD.
They're already designed, teachers have gone to training.
Have they looked at our data to see where our students were weak? Where our students needed that additional support or that enrichment in terms of language arts, math, science, or whatever, based on the data? Did they look at the data where our students are lacking or weakened to offer that?
Their, their programs are designed for all the districts and the county, whoever would like to, to implement. And those programs are designed around the standards and benchmarks that are put into place for that grade level. And they build the whole program based on students who struggle and what it will take to try to get them as close to grade level performing as possible. They only require three hours of instruction. We built it so that we have a four-hour morning of academics. And we built in that afternoon enrichment to provide students the opportunity to build relationships, to make connections. Because a main part of success in schools is having those connections. The academic time is, is designed and that timeframe is established through those MISD programs. We extended it a bit, but then we also built on the opportunity to have some fun, to build some relationships and to give kids an opportunity to do some things that they may not have been able to do if they didn't attend.
How are the students selected to come to be a part
There's, there's a bit of
of enrichment and the other types of enrichment?
There's a bit of interest and there's a bit of phone calls being made from the coordinators to students who struggled in classes based on grades and, and test data.
Yeah, every student's welcome and encouraged to attend.
So you said there's already curriculum made. Can you explain what that curriculum is? Like, is it math and English?
Yes.
Is it math, science, history? What is it?
Primarily math and ELA.
Okay, and so between, within that three hours, they're learning math and ELA?
Yes.
Strictly, right? Okay, and then what other support is there for them? And is there anything measured in that enrichment program? Is there any measurement within that enrichment program to see if, if that is helping?
Yes, there's data that will be collected so that we can determine the effectiveness of the programs and to see if the kids respond to that intervention.
And how is that done? Based on testing, are they tested when they come in and tested when they leave?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm still on this summer program thing.
Okay.
Okay. We got a little bit of fun, we got some learning, right? Are we having focused instruction and are we having any guidance counselors? Are we having someone that's guiding them through this process?
There's a counselor.
You know I'm big on that.
I know. There's a counselor who will be assigned to the entire summer program. Who will be available to support students during the moment or to check in on kids periodically to, you know, as planned meetings, but they'll also be available if a kid is in crisis at that moment.
Get back up real quick.
And then we also have
You said there'll be planned meetings with the counselor?
The, the counselor will plan to meet with students and they will also be available to students who may be in crisis.
So the counselor will see the students?
Correct.
Will see every student in the program, right? Will make, I mean
They will, they will be checking in with kids, yes.
Here's the thing.
And with an intent to do so.
Here's the thing, a lot of times when there's transitional periods, K through one, five through six, seven through eight, whatever, the person don't know what's coming next. The person that's going to the next step is probably afraid that's going to take place at the next step. So now they focus on something else. If we have some way to give them, hold their hand and tell them what's going on, what's taking next, this process might be a little bit better or easier transition. So I asked about the summer program because in the school year, beginning of school year, summer's in the middle. So if we can get that process where they move into the process, everything works a whole lot better. So I asked about the counselors or somebody to give them guidance other than someone standing in the hallway, who's available to see them, if they make time and get to talk to every one of them. I mean, if we have to hire another counselor, then put in a budget. I mean, we spent quite a bit of money on the summer program. I want it to be effective.
I do have another question. So you, I hear a lot of, we're putting in, we're going to be doing, things like that.
I'm huge, as I stated in the last meeting, about policies and procedures because I think it's one of the foundational issues that we have here at Mount Clemens. What is done, what has been done with, in regards to the enrichment program? Like, where is that information at? Where are those policies, procedures, and processes at for that program?
In specific to the design or the hiring?
Everything.
The courses available?
Yeah.
I can send you
Everything, so that way
Quite a bit of information.
Yeah, so that way, I mean, because honestly, I think we, we should all know that, like, you know, both from the parent standpoint, the board standpoint, and the teacher's standpoint, right? As well as the administration, to be able to encourage people to take part in that.
And then secondly, I don't know if we can do anything like this, but doing some sort of buddy, buddy program with the next level of kids with that transition, similar to what you were saying, that hand-holding, is having somebody, you know, having that buddy to show them that next level, right? That transition and just checking in with them. I mean, I don't know from a maturity standpoint if that's doable or if, you know, we have to kinda think on that level. But maybe we can talk to guidance counselors about that and figure out how we can address that. You know, I think peer-to-peer is a, is a really good thing, so.
Last question, that's what I'm done. The last question, David, I hope so. The start date?
July tenth through August seventeenth.
July tenth to August seventeenth?
Yes.
That's why if nobody got anything in the mail, they probably see this on YouTube or something. July tenth to August seventeenth. Okay, and how many students do we have that's already in the shoot?
Signed up?
Yeah, in the shoot, who signed up, ready to go?
I would have to get that information and I can send that in, in my next board update.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take registration through July tenth.
Okay, and how are we contacting the parents?
What's that?
How are we contacting the parents?
The sign-up was emailed, posted on social media, and specific phone calls have been made to families.
Sign-up was by email? You know I'm asking that question. You probably know why, right? Okay, 'cause I'm, I'm a parent. All right, thanks.
When I asked what students were, was offered to, we said students that we, and tried to encourage students that were struggling. Did, are we sending a letter out to those parents?
There was communication that was sent out as well. Yeah, from the coordinators.
Ms. Lavender, you may wanna check on the process of the information being disseminated to the parents and make sure they get the information. If it's just by email or social media and specific phone calls, you might have to do a robocall for a week straight. I don't know what the process to the, I'm not gonna tell you how to do it, I'm not gonna micromanage you on how to do it. But you need to get the information out to the parents because I didn't get it. So that's what I'm saying. My wife might've got it though, so I'm not gonna say I didn't get it. So my wife might've got it, might have her email.
And I don't, I would have to check the reports.
Yeah, it happens, it happens all the time, so it's not a big deal.
I was gonna say, we've checked on this in the past.
On me, it happens all the time because she gets the email and I don't get the email, but that's, that's, we're two different email accounts. But just check on that, because I wanna make sure the students in this district get what they need to be successful. If we spend all this money getting this process done for the summer.
I will, I'll get you an enrollment update.
Email it.
Give you weekly updates on that enrollment until the first week after it starts.
Okay, do it. Home and pigeon, whatever, okay?
I got it.
Any additional questions, comments? Anything more to add, Mr. Lavender? Moving the agenda forward, seven B update slash change of graduation requirements.
This, I'll have Mr. Lavender speak to this, but these are some changes. We're not requesting a change to the number of credits for students to graduate. What we are trying to do is have the credits that the students need to take make more sense.
At the June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three Board of Education workshop, Mount Clemens Administration and MISD Career Readyness Accounting Consultant Sarah Strobeck reviewed the current graduation requirements. The focus of this suggested change in requirements is to remove the technology computers credit requirement and replace it with a career pathways elective. This change will maintain high school graduation requirements for Mount Clemens High School students above and beyond the established expectations from the state of Michigan while maintaining our current number of total credits needed for graduation, twenty-two total. This change will allow students to have more flexibility and meaning in their education. The only change that is being recommended is to remove the technology slash computers credit and replace that with a career pathway elective. More career electives have been and are in the planning of getting implemented. Students will have more flexibility and meaning as they progress through their high school courses. These changes will allow students to take more dual enrollment, CTE, and other courses that align with students and their interests and future plans. The Mount Clemens Community Schools Administration recommends that the Board of Education adopt a change to the Mount Clemens High School graduation requirements by removing the technology computer credit and replacing it with a credit for career pathways elective.
I have a question.
Yes.
I know you're proposing to remove the technology slash computers as a requirement. Are we doing away with it all totally together? Because that could be
Right.
a career pathway for some students.
No, we're actually looking to change our current computer class and add in Microsoft credentialing. Many stu-, so the state expectation is that students have to have an, an online experience. We can satisfy that through our career pathways electives that we have implemented and that we plan to implement. We're not removing computer, the computer class as an option. We're actually looking to make it better. But this recommendation does help students to have more options to satisfy that credit expectation.
Is this an action item?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna ask questions before you make a motion, right?
Sure.
Okay.
You've heard the recommendation is to remove the technology slash computers as a current requirement and to have options, other options for, for that credit as opposed to having the technology computers as a requirement. It could be an elective, it could be part of the career pathway elective. But the request is to remove it as a required course. We're not changing the number of hours for graduation, just changing the selection that students will have for, for that. Heard the recommendation, the chair would entertain a motion relative to the change of the graduation requirements.
So moved?
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker. Are there any questions, Dr. McFadden?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. President. So Sarah, that came down from ISD last Thursday. She mentioned about this, this elective being kinda redundant. That's the reason why we're really actually moving it, moving it from the curriculum. It's a redundant credit, pretty much a computer technology thing.
Credit. We're taking a look at taking the concurrent computer class and changing what is taught in it to make it more meaningful. There are, there are local, local high schools who have Microsoft credentialing in their computer class. And we would like to provide that opportunity to our students so that they have something to put on a resume. They have specific training that's applicable to a job situation now or even when they graduate. So that will become an option as well. It's, we're not losing that as an option.
Right, so let me ask this question then. What is taught in that class now?
Basic computer applications.
So now we're making it an elective, correct?
Correct. It's currently an elective, but it's a required elective.
Thought it was gonna be another recommendation about adding counselors to the school year also. Maybe it wasn't. I remember I was mistaken on that one. Okay, I'm good.
Any additional questions regarding the motion on the floor to update, change the graduation requirements? Hearing a sing, none. Call roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Combe?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item eight, May financial reports. It's under the May. I don't see anything under it. Yes, the May financial reports.
Right, so Ms. Dawes, the May financial reports, they were presented at the, the, at the Finance Committee meeting in May. And at the Board Workshop as well, so this is just an opportunity if there are any questions.
Are there any questions regarding the May financial reports that were vetted at the session last Thursday?
Right.
It's an information item, it's not an action item.
Right.
Hearing is seeing none. Moving to item nine.
Right.
Approval of the amended final budget for twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Uh, was discussed at the public hearing. Also, single sheet showing the final for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Any additional questions regarding the amended final budget for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year? Chair would entertain a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three amended final budget.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing is seeing none. Call roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next, the proposed twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget as we discussed during the public hearing. And that's the, this page. It shows, let's see, add. We're projecting. Are there any questions regarding the proposed twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four proposed budget? We're projecting a fund balance of sixteen point three percent of our total operating budget.
Mr. Dawes, there's nothing additional to add to this budget? I came a little bit behind the eight ball on this one.
All right, none at this time. There will be, um, some ongoing meetings with Mr. Roper and, uh, Ms. Dawes to, um, during July and August, and there will be an amended debt budget presented to the board in October. The very latest, it would be November. And at that point, there'll be a lot of unknowns that we will know.
Okay, so that's where I was going with it.
Yep. This is just a proposal. It's what every district does at this point.
Was that, was this budget built on a projected seven hundred and fifty-nine students? Or was it project, I heard the superintendent mention, uh, a projected loss of eighty students because we, we experience, uh, a loss, uh, every year.
Right.
Beginning of the year.
It was projected on an eighty student loss.
From the seven fifty-nine?
Down from seven fifty-nine.
No, I'm saying the eighty, my, seven fifty-nine minus eighty, okay.
So it was, um, like a six hundred thousand dollar reduction in state aid.
Hopefully, hopefully, we won't need to do that. But right now, we're building our budget, making sure that we aren't over budgeting in items. Making sure that we have the money to pay for what we're, what we do.
Yeah, does these numbers correlate to the question I had last Thursday in reference to sustaining our finances with the new contract?
We will need to increase enrollment.
How many?
I would say to sustain, we would need to increase, um, from the projection. About, we should stay around enrollment around seven fifty.
Right.
Or higher.
So the projection is, um, six sixty-two, and so we need to increase enrollment by ninety-seven kids, give or take.
So at the close of this year, we add seven hundred and fifty-nine students to blended count?
Blended count, yes.
And the budget is projected, uh, loss of eighty students. But order, in order to sustain, uh, the budget that, that we're, the expenditures that we approved tonight and to sustain the district as is, we have to either increase enrollment or we have to right-size
Correct.
programs.
Programs and schools.
And staff.
And staff, absolutely.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to approval of the proposed budget for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Moved by Member Cahoon.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Yeah, thi- this is, and this isn't anything new. We do it every year. A budget is not something that's etched in stone, uh, it's lucid, it moves. You can amend the budget as many times as you need to amend the budget. We're just approving a projected budget. And in all projected budgets, uh, when you find, you get the final numbers, you have the opportunity to amend the budget or right the budget, whether it's increasing the budget or decreasing the budget. This is just a proposed roadmap, and we can change that roadmap if we need to down the line. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget? Hearing is seeing none. Call roll, please.
Mrs. Cahoon? Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Nine A, student activities. I don't understand how this is put together, what is this?
Okay.
All of the, um, the student activity, the food service, the debt fund, they all have to have their, um, approved budget, which was presented at the finance and the workshop. So it's just an approval of what was given to you?
I wasn't at the workshop, so I'm at a disadvantage, so I'd like to see where that information is, um, either in the board packet or.
You didn't get it passed over?
I wasn't at the work session. It was passed out at the work session. The rest of my colleagues were there, so if you feel comfortable with making motions on, on moving forward with these budgets that were discussed, we, we can do that. Are you asking to collectively do them all at once or to do them individually?
All at once is fine.
Okay, well.
And, and I'll speak to that. Um, so the debt fund is, um, basically, you have your revenue coming in from your taxes, and then you have your debt payments, um, in May and November. So, that is, um, that's something normal that happens every year, so we're just paying down the debt. And then on the school revenue, um, to student activity, that is something that was implemented in nineteen, twenty school year. And that's another thing that's just, you approve the budget, um, every, just as a general fund. All of these have to be approved. And then the food service, the same thing. You have, um, the fund balance. I, I have that going down, but it's still, there's still a fund balance. Next school year, we'll focus, um, on collaborating with the food service on how to, um, increase that fund balance. So we're not, um, taking any of general fund money to sustain food service.
So you, again, collectively, you want a motion to approve these collectively? I know they are part of the general operating budget, but they have their own budgets inside of the general operating budget.
These actually all have their own budget. They're not within the general fund, so yes, yep.
The chair would entertain a motion relative to the approval of the student activities budget, the debt fund budget, the food service budget, and the general fund budget, correct?
Correct.
If that was your asking?
Mr. President, I move to approve the budget finally proposed of item nine A, student activity, item nine B, debt, item nine C, food service, item nine D, general fund.
Support.
Moved by Member McFadden, seconded by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor to approve A, student activities, B, debt services, C, food services, and D, general fund? Hearing is seeing none. Call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
No, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item ten, twenty-twenty-three, tax request form L forty twenty-nine, Madam Superintendent.
Uh, this was presented at the meeting that started at six fifteen. Again, this is the renewal of the millage and needs to be signed by you, Mr. Rickman, and by Ms. Walker, and needs to be approved by the board. So my recommendation is that the board, um, approve the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty, twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four tax levy on non-homeside properties.
The recommendation is to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four non-homeside tax levy. It has not increased
Nope.
over the last, minimally since last year. It's the same as it was last year. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item ten, the approval of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, tax levy rate request.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing is seeing none. Call roll, please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item eleven, purchase of Chromebooks, Madam Superintendent.
Uh, this is rea-, this, our recommendation is that the board approve the purchase of Chromebooks for the middle school students. This, I believe, is a title purchase?
Yes.
Heard the recommendation. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Member Cahoon.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Didn't we approve this at a previous meeting?
That was kindergarten.
Okay, how many Chromebooks are we looking to purchase?
I want to say three hundred.
Three hundred and eighty-six.
Three eighty-six, thank you. And, again, when we approved the, uh, other Chromebooks, we were not putting the equipment that they were using prior into a closet somewhere. Are we gonna refurbish and recondition inform, um, technology that, that was probably currently in use? And what we're gonna do with it when we get the new stuff?
Yes, my understanding from, um, technology, the current Chromebooks will be, um, allocated as additional devices for high school students to be used as take-home devices.
Also summer school.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing is seeing none. Call roll, please.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Yes, motion, motion carries. Item twelve, food service renewal, Madam Superintendent.
So, food service renewal, this is the, um, final year of a five-year, um, contract with food service. We'll be going out to bid next year. What this will do is, um, ensure that our food service, um, contract stays through the school year. And we'll be doing RFP in, I would be thinking that it would be early fall.
Recommendation is to approve the fifth year of the current contract with our current food service vendor.
Right.
Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing is seeing none. Call roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Agenda item thirteen, recommendation to enter negotiations for the sale of King Academy, Madam Superintendent.
Um, this information was presented to the board at our work session last week and also at our, um, finance committee meeting that we, that has also taken place. We are requesting that the board allow the administration to enter into negotiations for the sale of King.
Heard the recommendation. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item thirteen. Chair seeking a recom-, uh, motion. Recommendation to enter negotiations for the sale of King Academy. We're not approving a sell, we're just approving to begin negotiations.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker. Seconded, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion regarding the motion on the floor? Again, this is not a recommendation. The board is selling the building. With this action is to allow the administration to enter in negotiations for the sale of the building, potential sale of the building.
Um, and why is, why are we selling the building?
Um, right, we do not need the space.
We don't need the space?
We do not need the space.
So there's enough capacity at Seminole?
Absolutely.
For the kids?
Yes. There's, they have their own complete pod.
Is there any room left over after the kids?
I believe there's three classrooms left over after, um, all of King moves into Seminole. There are still three empty classrooms.
Just so we can be a little bit more transparent with our community, how many students attend King at this time?
Eighty-some.
And what is the building capacity hold?
Oh, at King?
Yeah.
There is, um, so there are two pods there with eight classrooms, so there's sixteen classrooms over at King. So, I don't know, you could maybe figure twenty, if you figure twenty students per classroom, there'd be three hundred and twenty kids.
And we only have eighty?
Yes. There's two ECSE classrooms right now, and there are five GSRP classrooms over there.
And what is the capacity of Seminole?
Okay, so at Seminole, you're testing my math skills here today, but, um, so at Seminole, we have, uh, three pods. They have ten classrooms in each pod, so that is thirty classrooms. we have three pods, they have ten classrooms in each pod, so that is thirty classrooms, say twenty students, which is low for most of the elementary, that would be six hundred students.
And what's the current enrollment at Seminole?
Around seven, I'm sorry, around four hundred. Seven.
Because I know at one time, Seminole housed more than six hundred students.
Yes, they did, and we are well below that.
And so what happens with the increase? I mean, we're expecting an increase, right? I mean, because that's how we're going to grow. So what happens after the increase? Because we only have one elementary, right?
Right.
If, I mean, we're going to enter in negotiations, like that's what this decision is?
Correct.
But again, transparency of the public.
Right.
What happens if?
Well, right now, we still have three empty classrooms over there, so there is the possibility of three additional classrooms, so sixty more students over there. And then, as far as after that, again, where the district, what you really need to do is a strategic plan and figure out what we need to do with all of our schools and all of the space. But there is a lot of space here as well.
All of them.
For elementary?
Lot of empty classrooms here.
But I, I remember talking to you, and you said that elementary and.
Right, so the difference is. Pardon?
You said that high school and elementary kids could not be in the same school, or that the parents would not like that.
Well, it depends. So there's a lot of smaller school districts where elementary kids and high school, there are many schools in, throughout Michigan, are kindergarten through twelfth grade. So that, so it could, that could very possibly work. And there is so much space here. If we needed additional space, we could very easily separate elementary kids from middle and high school kids.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
For transparency, we move with negotiations, a purchase agreement with the ISD?
Correct.
Yes.
The Michigan, yeah, Macomb Intermediate School District.
Because I don't know if anybody heard that, so we're going with the IS, M-I-S-D.
The, in addition, so it would be for special education students, and we have also had conversations with the ISD, and they are willing to put into an agreement, as we negotiate, that if we need additional space, that we can purchase the building back, if needed.
We talked about the budget, and we talked about right sizing. All of our buildings that we currently operate are underpopulated. We got a building, King, that we got eighty-three students that hold three hundred students or more. So you're underutilizing space. So that's one reason why we're entering negotiations to sell the building, because we're operating a one-quarter housed building.
And just for transparency purposes, how come this wasn't put out, you know, for, like, sale, like, listed for a sale? Or wasn't, I should say? Was it put out to offer up a sale?
It was not. We have, excuse me, we have information from our attorneys that as a school district, we do not have to do that, and what we are looking at is kind of keeping that school within our home and our community, within Macomb County, with the ISD. And if we ever need it, hopefully we do, that we would be able to move back in there, and by opening it up for sale, the chances of a charter moving into that school are very high.
One of the best things about that is we fall under the ISD. So they like our, you may say, our parent superintendent. So with that being, I call it a partnership, collaborative agreement type of situation. So even though the school is, we're moving out with our one classroom of students, they should be filling the whole building up, about three hundred-plus students, or possibly more, or whatever their capacity is. Right, with their programs, and that will help that, not only keep and maintain that building, but now we have additional money added to the budget. Because as you know, with the last election, the millage and what they received over at the ISD was a pretty good amount. So basically, the tax dollars coming back to support our district. In the same token, we have the ability, ability to move back in that building if it takes place. Like I said, the superintendent at the ISD, even though she works for this district, Mike Devault in ISD, they work for all the districts. So they have representation.
Yep.
So it's not like we're letting it go. We're not selling it outside of, I call it outside of the family. It stays in the family. They take care of it, and if we need it, they make sure we're taken care of.
Absolutely.
And if we put it out for sale on the open market, we can't control who purchases it. The ISD is not a competitor against us, like anybody else that would purchase that building, whether it be a charter school or a religious entity that would open up a school, they would compete against, against, excuse me, against us, whereas the ISD is not a competitor of, you know, of grabbing our students. That's my, you know, my perspective on it. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the recommendation and the motion on the floor for item thirteen, to enter negotiations with the M-I-S-D for the sale of King Academy? Hearing and seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item fourteen, recommendation to enter into a lease agreement for the Washington Academy. Madam Superintendent.
So what we are asking to do is, we would, we are creating lease agreements with Wash, for the people that are still in Washington Academy, which would be the Foster Closet and Morning Star Preschool. We have been, going back, we've been getting some information from our attorney, we do not have it yet. We spoke at the last, at the board workshop, but we have not received information back from the attorney. But the leases are up June thirtieth, and we are looking at allowing them to stay through.
September thirtieth.
Through September thirtieth, and continuing their current leases, what they normally pay the county, they would be paying us, but if they stay beyond September thirtieth, there would be an increase. And so we're just waiting for the exception. Yes, there would be an eviction.
September thirtieth was the cutoff date.
Right.
Heard the recommendation to enter into a lease agreement for the Washington Academy that would end September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second by Member Walker. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor?
And so, are we saying that we are, we're just in negotiations?
Right.
For it? We're not signing a lease of any kind at this moment, we're in negotiations?
Okay.
Correct?
Jennifer?
The lease is up.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. We have not, I have not received any information back from the attorney from our last meeting. But if it, the, I get the agreement to say what we said at the workshop, then I would like to just move forward with it.
And what happens if it doesn't? If it doesn't, then we will bring it to the board at the finance committee meeting. We'll bring it at the work session in July, and we will bring it in to the board for approval in July, and what will happen is the lease will continue through July.
I, I'm going to ask a question there. So the lease that's existing through June thirtieth at Washington is through the county. So I do not believe we can continue into July. I think we need to have something in place prior to June thirtieth, so that July first, the lease is with the district. Because there is no agreement with this district. The agreement between the parties is between the county and the individual entities. That agreement has nothing to do with us.
Okay.
Because that's a sublease.
So can I make a different recommendation, then? Can, just think about this one, then. So we'll make a recommendation to, to enter into a lease agreement with Morning Star and with Foster Closet, which will continue their lease payments at the same rate that they're paying the county, they will be paying us, and they will be out by September thirtieth. Done. And it also is at no cost to us, so there, no improvements will be made to the school at, until, through this period.
That was my understanding at the work session, that the lease, extension of the lease would be with the district.
Right.
The county is out officially June thirtieth. Everyone's leased, that's leasing their, their lease expires June thirtieth. We're willing to enter to, enter into agreement to continue the lease until September thirtieth.
Period.
And the lease would be with the school district and not the county, because their lease expires June thirtieth. So it would be negotiations with us and the two, the two entities that are, that are in there now.
I don't know if I would agree to not seeing the lease agreement. I mean, if we need to call a special meeting before the thirtieth, I would rather do that. We had a lot of questions in the finance committee meeting about the lease, we had a lot of questions the other night, and I thought we were going to have that presented to us tonight. So did the attorney give you a day on when they were going to have it back?
He has not responded. I think he's out of state, I do believe.
I'm with you. I don't, I don't want to agree to something unless we have a copy and can review the lease.
How quick can attorneys get that lease together?
I reached out to another one today and never got a response from him, because I was trying to find out where the, my contact is and why I haven't heard from him. So, I mean, it, I think once I talk to him, I should have it within a couple days, but I need someone to get back in touch with me.
Okay. Think it'd be ready by next Tuesday?
We hope so.
Yeah, I certainly hope so, too. I think as long as I can get ahold of someone, that it should be just a couple days, and we would have it.
Well, we're, we can table this item until we get information from legal counsel, but it necessitates us having a meeting prior to the end, to June thirtieth, because that's when their current lease is expired. And if we're going to extend any leases, then we need to have that language prior to June thirtieth. So the three entities that are currently in the building will have an opportunity to, to sign on for the extension of that lease, so.
You're open to a special meeting, then?
Well, I mean, we're going to have to have a special meeting. It, you know, there's no other way around it, is to have a special meeting.
Next Friday is June thirtieth, right?
Yes.
I like to make a motion for a special meeting.
Well, we've got, we've got a motion on the floor right now.
Okay.
That is not dealing with a special meeting. We can, the way to get out of this motion, either you vote it down, or somebody offer amendment to the motion to table it, and that will take precedence over the motion that's currently on the floor.
I move to amend the motion to table.
It's been moved by Member McFadden to table the discussion on item fourteen, recommendation to enter into a lease agreement for the Washington Academy. Second by Member Cahoon. Any questions, comments, concern on the motion on the floor to table the actions from recommendation item fourteen? Hearing and seeing none, call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. That facilitates the necessity to have a special meeting. Hopefully, we can have something from the attorney by, I mean, it has to be prior to Friday, so, you know, we're trying to have a special meeting Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, that those are, seem like the options that we would have to have a special meeting. So what is the will of the board?
I move to have a special meeting on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, at six o'clock in the PM, right here at this location.
Moved by Member McFadden to have a special meeting, June thirtieth.
June twenty-seventh.
Excuse me, twenty-seventh, thank you, at six PM.
Yes, sir.
In this building, in this building. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Member Collins, I think I heard.
Yep.
Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to establish a special meeting for June twenty-seventh at six PM?
Do I need to specify the reason for the special meeting?
No.
Okay.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Six o'clock is okay with everybody? He's pushing it for me, but I can make it work.
Okay.
You want me later?
I mean, if everybody, if it works for everybody else, I can make it work. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call roll, please.
I'm Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item fifteen, appoint, reappointment of Julie Tinkler to the Public Library.
Board.
Board. Ms. Tinkler has served this capacity for who? Since nineteen ninety-four, and she's still willing to serve in the capacity. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the reappointment of Julie Tinkler to the Mount Clemens Public Library Board.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
You said nineteen ninety-four, she'd been there?
Yeah.
Nineteen ninety-four, when she was first appointed.
Well, God bless her soul.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
Is there anybody that stepped up?
No, that, this was it.
Okay.
We had Ms. Al do all the checking and all of that before, we just brought this.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Informational items, item sixteen, Superintendent's comments.
Good evening, everyone, I'll make this short. This is my final regular board meeting of my career. It's kind of, it's a little bit bittersweet, to be honest. I'd like to thank all of you who have served on the board these past three years, you have made this position wonderful and challenging, and you've pushed me and you've pushed the district, so thank all of you for that. Can't say I've loved every minute, but I can say I love it here. I do love it here, this is an amazing place. I'd like to give blessings to all of you for all your work and your love of the students, our district, our staff, and just keeping us viable. And my final words are, wants a bather, always a bather. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Item seventeen, board comments. Ms. Cahoon?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna speak from my heart. You know, I have been having conversations with residents of this district.
You know, I, I have been having conversations with residents of this district and teachers of this district, and I'm really open to hearing just, just from everyone. And I keep saying that every board meeting that I am able to speak at, I encourage people to reach out to board members to have conversations because being here for three minutes and hearing grievances doesn't do anything. I, I mean, we can take it, we can listen to it, but I think having really in-depth conversations helps to move the needle or at least communicate and take in information, mull it over, investigate it, and things like that. So I think most people in general have good intentions, they really do. I think most people in this world have good intentions, but for whatever reason, be it political, be it so, social, economic, I don't know, we, we're tearing each other apart. We're, we're just ripping at the seams, and I'm so saddened by it every single day. And so when people in general have good intentions, they're not perfect. Things happen that are sometimes out of your control, sometimes they're misunderstanding, sometimes they're just things that went wrong, and you have to take accountability for that. My thing is, whatever I did wrong, and it has to be wrong for me to acknowledge and take accountability to it, I will. I want to do what's just and what's right in this world by God, because at the end, He's the only one that I have to answer to. So, I have questions about Ms. Bethel. I have questions as to why she was walked out in front of students that, to me, even from a, just, just from a common sense standpoint, just doesn't sound like a logical thing. But the one thing that I kept seeing, and I keep seeing every meeting, is people that are coming and speaking about Mrs. Bethel's character. We had Mr. Roper here doing interviews, and many people had spoken about him, and board members had called his references, and you acknowledged that those things helped in your decisions. I just wonder what is different about the people that are coming and speaking about Mrs. Bethel's character? I don't know, I'm not there every day, I don't know the situations, but I think just from what I've been able to observe and listen, we have, and, and this is probably my third time saying it, from a foundational standpoint, we have processes and policies that are not being adhered to whatsoever. Those are issues that cause miscommunication, misunderstanding, and those will rip people apart. I don't know if there's been any type of discrimination or anything like that, that is not for me to judge or to decide. I just know that you can't solve anything by being apart, you have to come together and discuss things. And I think that Mr. and Mrs. Jackson, by, by saying that we need to have something like that, I think that, I, I looked up the, the policy that we can have some sort of, some sort, sort of informal meeting, which I don't know about other board members, but I'm, I would love to do that. Have some sort of forum where we can sit down and not solve problems, but at least hear from the community and see what happened or see what we can do to resolve issues. As I said, we need to come together, and I'm, I'm putting my hand out to the teachers, to the faculty, to the administration for the coming school year. I just came in in January, I didn't come to the graduation because quite honestly, I'd be a hypocrite if I did, because I don't know the students. I'd be there just as a show, and that's not who I am. I want to get involved this school, this coming school year, but I want to know from a teacher, administration, and faculty standpoint, what would you like me as a school board member to do? What would, what would be helpful for you? And then also from a resident's standpoint, what, share with us your thoughts on what you would like the board, or what you think, or what you expect of the board to do in terms of the school. I, I really, I want to really harp on the processes and the policies being adhered to because I think, I think if we can get them documented in a handbook, if we get good training at the school and at this district, and we, we start off the new year with a lot of those things in place, we can't have room for misunderstandings. And if we have misunderstandings, they have to be communicated based on what's on the policies and procedures, which I don't think we're adhered to from Miss Bethel. Because I saw that if there are issues with the faculty and there are issues against the superintendent, we have to, like, as a board, we have to hear those grievances. So, I'll end with this. My goal is to keep the lines of communication open between the residents, between the teachers and the faculty and the administration, between other board members, because we can't get anywhere if we don't communicate. We have got to hear all of the grievances, all the complaints, and we will do our best. I know I will, because I only have one person and one spirit to answer to in this world, and that's when I perish, and he will be judging me on that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
I'd like to say it was great attending the graduation, seeing those dining bathers walk across the stage. You know that that particular class, the first class, who came in ninth grade year, during COVID as freshmen, and that it was a tough road ahead, but they got through it. I'd like to thank Rachel Joseph for serving in the interim as the Accountability Officer at the secondary complex, and Tom Hannah for serving as interim principal at Seminole for the rest of the school year. And it was great working with you, Monique, and first as my interim principal in 2019 and to now. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mrs. O'Neil?
This has been been here, and I hope that the teachers and the students take this summer for, that they will rest and come back in September energized and ready to go. I want to congratulate again the seniors that graduated. It was really good seeing them graduate this year. And to you, Monique, it has been, it's been well. It has been well, and again, we have gone through some tough times, but overall, it has been well. And I want to say to those that have spoke tonight, many of them has left, and I wish they would have stayed. I wish they would have stayed, because what I want to say is oftentimes we go through, on the board, I just want to remind everybody, we have one employee. And I heard someone say that we were accountable for things that, personnel issues, which, which were not accountable, but I, just, just let me just hear this. It's difficult for us to make decisions oftentimes where there's no transparency. And all, and there oftentimes, we also have to remember, there's always three sides to every story. There's this side, there's this side, and there's always the truth. And what we also often need to do is find out what the truth is. And we also have to be careful of, and I say this lightly, well, I probably shouldn't say it, but what, we have to be careful of how we receive things from people, and we have to oftentimes take it with a grain of salt, because manipulation is very strong, and you, you just, I, I think you just have to be careful. You know, I wasn't going to make a comment because I was, I was afraid of what I was really going to say. Because the, the derogatory comments and the stones that were thrown tonight, many of you really don't have a clue on this side of the table. The decisions that we have to make to make sure, first and foremost, for our students, that they are getting the proper education that they need, it's, it's, it's difficult. And, and I also heard you say something about, I, I'm sorry, I just lost my thought. Being some prejudice and things like that that went on. It may have been, but a lot of times when we create situations, we become these ult, um, ultimate victims, which really needs to stop on both sides of the table. So I, I've given out my name and my phone number to the community several times. I have had the same phone number for the last 30 years, I have lived in the same house for the last 10 years. I have welcomed you all to call me, email me. I have, I have read emails where I have even volunteered to meet individuals, and they have, they turned it down. So I don't know what else for us to say or to do, but again, to maybe come together, like you said, and figure out what's really going on, get down to the bottom, let's find out what the true, truth is. A lot of things I didn't, I, I wasn't aware of. I, I, I don't, I didn't, like I said, I, I think we need to work on some transparency here, even on this table. But again, call me, email me, do whatever you want to, because we can, we can say a lot of things over the microphone, but I think a lot of those conversations will change if we're face to face and if we're talking. So again, call me, email me, do whatever you would like to do, I will be more than happy to sit down and talk to you. Okay? And again, I hope you all have a wonderful summer, and I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Neil? Mrs. Collins?
I'm going to keep my comments as short as possible. Congratulations to our graduates, the day was beautiful. To Ms. Beals, thank you for your service to the district. We're not done yet, we have another meeting next week, so we'll, we'll talk more. A couple of things I want to address that I heard in the public comments tonight. There was one individual, and I've heard it before in the past, wanting specific information. Any information is available to the public with a FOIA request, and I think we need to be able to help people understand that FOIA request. Obviously, you're not going to get personnel matters, you're not going to get litigation matters, there's some things that the law restricts you from having, but you are welcome to the check register, you are welcome to detailed budgets, you are welcome, there, there are so many things that you can FOIA, and I just think that's something we need to educate more of our community on, because we have a lot of people asking us for things that us sitting at this table may not be able to present to you, but you can, you can FOIA the information. So that's important to know, that's, that's your right. Another thing I want, I heard tonight was the rumor about Mr. Roper. As far as I know, that is not true. I am very excited for Mr. Roper to start here in this district, and I'm very excited for the change that is coming with him. So I don't know where that rumor started, that's the first I heard it, but as a board member, that is not my intention. Other than that, like Stephanie said, there's a lot of people that come for comment, and I encourage it, but we don't have anybody reaching out to us individually. I'm, we're not getting, I've, I've gotten maybe a couple calls, but I've never received an email, I've never received a phone call, other than a, a few, very few people. So I'm open to it, I have no problem having a conversation with anyone. One last thing is, when I came on the board, and I, I think Stephanie and I were like deer in headlights at the ISD that day, being presented with blueprints, budgets, projections of where this district was going, it's overwhelming, and that is our position as board members. That is our job here, is to work towards reestablishing this district as a viable district. Personnel matters shouldn't be discussed publicly. If the individual wants to discuss that, that's within their right, but I'm going to respect their right to privacy that I'm required to give. So, and, and I know people want answers, but it's just not something I can give you personally as a board member. But I will talk about the future and the decisions that we are making here, especially tonight, there was one in particular, very difficult one. I'm open for those discussions, but within reason. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Collins. Ms. Walker?
I like it when I don't have to go first, and you guys say most everything. Congratulations again to the class of 2023, it was a beautiful ceremony. My dad graduated from here in 1944 and my sister in 69. Both have passed, this is my heart, these kids are my heart, this is where I came from. Mr. Fullwood, no one quotes scripture that doesn't get past me. It is my heart, it is who I am, it is what I have chosen to do as my profession, it is my life, it is the very, my very blood, and know that I take that very seriously, and I heard every word you said, and I do appreciate it, more than you know. And, Monique, I wish you God's grace and blessings as you move on, and I know that this next chapter of your life will be exciting and wonderful and full of books.
Definitely full of books.
Those are my comments tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Dr. McFadden?
Yes, sir, thank you much. Graduation ceremony was fun, it was a very fun ceremony. It was, you know, every year is something different, I had a good time. Madam Superintendent, thank you very much for your service. A lot of tough times, a lot, but there was many good times, and I want to say thank you for that. I heard something tonight about processes and policies, and I know that I am the chair of the Policy Committee, and I haven't had a lot of meetings for the simple fact, my predecessor, I call it the Monk Bible. Mr. Monk fine tuned the policies so well, that there's something missing on the website, which is open to the public, by the way. The policies are open, you can go on the website, the policies are there, just go through it. He, and I give him a lot of credit, he's no longer on this board right now, but I give Mr. Monk a lot of credit on organizing these policies and being his spearhead to make these policies what they are. I call them the Monk Bible. A lot of the things and the processes are there, the bylaws. Something I want to bring up though, because I know a lot of people approached this evening with a lot of anger, a lot of fear, a lot of passion, some people were shaking, some people had crackling in their voice, some people might even have tears in their eyes, and I get it. A lot of things that took place, especially when it, and you know, I heard a question about financials, financials, legal expense, legal costs. Please, forward the information, look at our budget, the line items for legal expense and costs. But something that came up a lot, and I don't like, I don't like being this, is blindsided. I don't like being blindsided, I don't like being, having any misinformation. Because misinformation builds rumors, rumors that Because misinformation builds rumors, rumors that show that, the one rumor that we heard tonight about Mr. Roper. That's a rumor. Couple email rumors that came out, which is rumors, because they never spun back to anybody. A lot of times, there's a lot of misinformation to steer things up, get you riled up, get you fired up, or even make you want to leave the room. But because the truth of the rumor is debunking the rumor, make sure that you know that the information you're getting is correct. Because I received a lot of information before, and it came out of somewhere. I don't know where it came from. It was like someone just typed it up and gave it to me. So I'm saying this because, when it comes to personnel issues, I will not tread on a person's character or their rights. And I will listen to all the facts. As my colleague said on the board, there's three sides to every story. His, hers, and the right side. Without the facts, we can't determine anything. So when it comes to legal, I'll spend as much money as I need, my own money, if it comes to the fact that happens to legal representation. But our district has legal representation to follow what needs to be done. And I'm not going to spend the district's money on trying to find extra legal representation. So with that being said, everything that was said tonight, I take dear heartily. But I do hate being blindsided. And I would say this, there's a couple of things that was mentioned tonight about things that took place in this district that I'm wondering why I'm hearing it now and not the last couple of years, when certain individuals were in these positions to express these thoughts and patterns. And maybe that's my fault. Maybe that's what it is. I will put double aim on my shoulders. Because I must not have been available enough for people to call me, comfortable enough for you to talk to me. I don't know what it is. I work right down the street around Cass and Grossberg. I live right over on North Avenue. I'm here at this school building at least twice a month. So if you can't find me, please look me up and let me know. Because the bottom line is, I can't do anything you expect me to do if I don't know what you want me to do. That's it. Spreading, those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. I'd like to start off by sounding redundant, but congratulations to the graduating class of 2023. This was a very unusual class. Like Member Walker said, their freshman year happened during COVID. Halfway through the year, they had to go home. The next year, you know, hybrid learning, some days in school, some days out of school. You know, it seemed like the world was coming to an end, and there was no hope. But they persevered, and they were able to walk across that stage. The Sensational Six, as I coined them, all of those students, they are going to college with college credits, dual degrees because of their fortitude and their perseverance to get the job done in some hard, tough situations. So kudos to the class of 2023. It was the first time I've seen this in the many graduations that I've attended, that the valedictorian and the salutedictorian, they gave their presentation together. They both mentioned how they were reluctant and hesitant and kind of afraid to speak publicly. So they shared that burden together, and it was not a traditional rendition or presentation by a salutedictorian and a valedictorian, but these two young ladies did it in their own way, and it made it work for them. And it was a great experience. Superintendent Beals, thank you for your service, and wish you well in whatever you choose to do in the future. I know you're not going to be somebody that's going to sit around and do some knitting and crocheting. You can't. There's nothing wrong with it, but I just don't see you doing that, that's all. I'd like to offer congratulations to the battling bathers and the lady bathers for their accomplishments at the state track meet. Some of them could not be at the graduation, because the state track meet was the next day. Some of them did participate in the graduation, and they drove up later on that night or earlier in the morning, depending on what event that you were involved in. But congratulations to those scholar athletes for their accomplishments at the state level. I've sat at this, we've all sat at this table. We've been accused of apartheid, plantation mentality. Again, there's, as my colleague O'Neil stated, and colleague McFadden restated, there's more than one side to a story. I will not discuss a personnel matter in public. That's unethical. That's immoral, and I won't do it. We, residents and citizens, have the right to vocalize and express their concerns during the citizens' comments, and that's their right, and I respect their rights, and I respect what they say, even though it might be negative. That's their right. I respect that. And I give everybody the same amount of respect. And I appreciate you coming to the mic. As colleague said, some people aren't speakers addressing in public. You could see people's hands shaking, people's voice cracking. But again, I respect your right to voice your concerns. To the staff, the students, enjoy your summer vacation. For those, the students that are being involved, and the staff that are being involved in the summer program, enjoy that program. It sounds like there's going to be some great activities, some non-traditional activities that you might have an opportunity to get involved with. But enjoy your summer vacation. Have some fun. And we look forward to seeing you here in the fall, fired up and ready to go. Once a bather, always a bather. Those are my comments. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker. Seconded by Member Walker. Call or roll, please.
So, okay, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mr. Rickmire?
Yes.
And Mrs. Coho.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at 9:21, 9:12 in the PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.